Good evening. I'm Joe Sawyer, the Superintendent of the Shrewsbury Public Schools. Welcome to this evening's school committee meeting of May eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Because this is the first meeting after the annual town election, this is the meeting at which the school committee reorganizes itself in terms of its officers and the officer roles. So I begin the meeting, per school committee policy, and first want to thank everyone who came out and voted yesterday in the town election. And I also want to congratulate everyone who's elected to different positions across of our town government, but in particular, congratulations to Mr. Wensky. John Wensky was re-elected. He is now beginning his fourth term serving on the school committee, and that I cannot calculate the number of hours that's been over the past nine years and will be heading into his tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, serving our community. So we really appreciate that very much. This was a year when only one seat was open for school committee, and Mr. Wensky was the successful candidate, and welcome him back onto the committee. So at this time, I will take nominations for the Chair of the Shrewsbury School Committee for the coming year.
I'd like to nominate John Wensky for Chair of the School Committee.
Second?
Motion's been made in seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Wensky, you are the new Chair. I will turn it over to you at this point.
Appreciate that. Okay. So, at this point, I need a nomination for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Rachel Sharifabour for Vice Chair.
Second.
Okay. The nomination has been moved in seconded. Any other comments?
Nope.
There being none, all those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Congratulations. All right. Also need a nomination for Secretary.
I nominate Erin Boucher for Secretary.
I'll second again.
All right. That's been moved in seconded. Any further comments? All right. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Okay. Congratulations. We'll now move to our new homes for the year, so if you wouldn't mind giving us a few minutes. So, once again, my name is John Wensky. I'm the Chairman of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, May eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco's channel twenty-nine and three-twenty-nine and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah and Liz Pavloski for their assistance with this broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and the YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, May fifteenth. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Tonight, we have not received any requests to speak. Public participation is certainly available to any and all residents that wish to address the committee regarding concerns pertaining to policy, budget, and the performance of the Superintendent. In the future, if anybody wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson in advance of the next scheduled school committee meeting. The school committee encourages residents to watch our meetings so they can become better informed and acquainted with the operations and programs of the Shrewsbury Public Schools. Next item on the agenda is chairpersons' and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report?
No.
Okay. I actually have a few. One, I'd like to thank the voters of Shrewsbury certainly for their support of my candidacy. It's definitely an honor to serve. Hard to believe it's been nine years and about another three years coming. So, really excited, really very excited and honored. So, thank you so much. Also, a big thank you to Ms. Sandy Fritz on completing her sixth time as Chair of the School Committee in what is her sixteenth year on this board. Outstanding work. Thank you so much for all that you do for guiding and leading this committee. It really is remarkable, and I appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Next item on the agenda is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you very much. Let me also add my thanks to Ms. Fritz. I think that, these are multiple times we've worked together with you as the Chair, and the Chair worked closely with the role of Superintendent, and always felt terrific support and appreciate the time and effort that it's taken. So, thank you very much for your continued service in that role. And welcome to you, Mr. Wensky, back into the Chair role for the second time, I believe, at this point in your career.
Yes.
A few things. This is a time of year of recognition. We are back on May first was National Principals Day, and that's Appreciation Day for all of our school principals who work so hard to serve our schools and school communities. This week is National Teacher Appreciation Week, and yesterday was National Teacher Appreciation Day. So certainly want to recognize the incredible work that our teachers do across our nine buildings and really just during a time, both for principals and teachers, as well as the other group, because today is National School Nurse Day, which happens during National Nursing Appreciation Week, which is happening right now as well. All of these roles, right now, and I've communicated this in a variety of ways this past year, this is the most complex the work has been, certainly in my thirty-plus years in education. And the effort and the skill that our colleagues in Shrewsbury bring to this work is remarkably good. I continue to be proud of everyone and their efforts and what they're trying to do for our students and their families and each other as colleagues, and that makes our community a better place. I want to just recognize everyone on those appropriate recognition days. And what I will add, I had the good fortune last evening to attend a recognition awards dinner put on by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that was up at the conference center up at Devens, where a variety of educators and leaders, education leaders from across the Commonwealth were honored. They chose that because we're during Teacher Appreciation Week, and I was honored to be able to be there to celebrate Ms. Sarah Monica. Ms. Monica is the longtime teacher at the Little Colonial's Preschool Program at Shrewsbury High School, so she not only is an expert at teaching our young preschool students, but she is also teaching the high school students, taking child development classes about, in their classes, in that program. Accompanying me was Dr. Erica Pratt, who is the Director of Physical Education, Health, and Family Consumer Science. Ms. Monica's role comes under the Family Consumer Science Department. And along with Ms. Monica, her husband, one of her children, and her mom were all there to celebrate with her because she was one of the runners-up for state Massachusetts Teacher of the Year this past year. And so it was really terrific to see educators from across the Commonwealth being honored and recognized for the excellent work they do. We will see Ms. Monica, I confirm she'll be joining us in June, when the traditional date when retirees come and are recognized by the school committee. But just again, want to recognize the tremendous work that she's done, because this is her last year in the district. She's retiring. I tried to get her to come out of retirement, but I was not successful. She hasn't even started it yet. But we'll certainly recognize her when the time comes, but I wanted to make mention that she was honored at the state level last evening, and that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Great. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is student recognition for the DECA State Champions. So colleagues, seven members of the Shrewsbury High School DECA Business Club were recognized as state champions, and six of these state champions were awarded additional medals for achieving the highest role-play score in the state, along with DECA Advisor, Mr. Jason Andriola. The students will talk about their achievements and be recognized by the committee. So, welcome you up to the desk here and get settled. And, Mr. Andriola, as they sit down, if you want to introduce us to the team?
Thank you for having us. So I'm Jason Andriola, business teacher at Shrewsbury High School and the chapter advisor as well. This is our second year as a chapter in Shrewsbury, and I have these seven students who are all state champions with me, and in a moment, I'll have them just go down the line and introduce themselves in the category they participated in. Before I do that, though, I want to mention a couple international recognitions, which we attended that conference last week in California. Trung Nguyen earned a finalist medal. Nan Cole earned a medal for the highest exam score in his category of finance. And James Troy earned a medal in entrepreneurship for the highest role-play score. So if you guys want to just go down, maybe we can start with Dan. Just say your name and category that you competed in.
Dan Molina, apparel and accessories. Yo, hey, my name is Trung Nguyen, and I'm in personal financial literacy.
My name is Nan Cole, and I compete in personal finance along with Trung.
I'm Jocelyn. I did human resources management.
I'm Nuhah. I do entrepreneurship.
I'm Christian. I participated in principles of finance.
And I'm James Troy, and I also did entrepreneurship.
So I want to welcome you all here, and first congratulate you on earning state championships and then some additional honors at the international level, which is incredible. I'm wondering, Mr. Andriola, perhaps if the students might talk a little bit about what the different categories are, and for people who aren't familiar with DECA, what these competitions are like, what they're expected to do. I understand there's a written test up front, and there's a role-play piece that's at a conference and which starts at the district level, then goes on to states, and then beyond that to the international competition. But maybe people could give a little bit of a flavor to what they do.
Yeah, sure. Does anybody want to take that one? Process of how you got from the beginning of the year through internationals. Let's start with that.
So, yes, at first, so we all could be at district, which we are district seven for DECA.
Yes.
So we could be at Worcester, and now, of course, I think top seven of all the participants in the category move forward to state, right? And then by then, there is approximately like ten chapters, twenty chapters across the state competing against each other. And then, of course, there's top six, I think, in each category. We'll move on to international, which, of course, we compete across with different countries. I think like ten different countries, I'm sure on that numbers. And our fifth is state, of course, I think mostly represents in DECA. And of course, we're competing, and top twenties becomes finalists, and top three are one, of course, has championships.
Yeah, and basically, the DECA program is organized with like four categories of content areas, focus areas, finance, hospitality, management, and entrepreneurship. So the students really have to start with like one of those focus areas. And then within those focus areas, you can choose a multitude of categories to compete in a little bit. There's, most of them, actually, this whole group competed in roleplays. There's also written projects. We've had students go that route as well. And the role-play component is in front of a judge. You're given, actually, does anyone want, somebody pick up the role-play piece, explain how that, what did you have to do in your role-play? There's an exam component and a role-play component.
Well, the role-play is like, they give you a situation, and you're supposed to act as if like you're the, you take upon a role, basically. So depending on your category, say if you're finance, you may like take part of like a financial advisor. If you're entrepreneurship, you're a business owner, and it's kind of along the lines of those. And then within that, they also have these certain points that you're supposed to address, which are called performance indicators, and those are more content-based, where you have to like define something or explain a certain like mix or something along the lines of that, and you're supposed to kind of integrate that. And they also give you a limited prep time. So depending on your category, say you're doing a partner category, they'll give you thirty minutes, and then you'll get your role-play and a couple of pieces of paper. And then if you're doing individual, it's ten minutes, and they, you have those ten minutes to prep, and then you have a ten-minute conversation, basically. And then at the end, the judge will ask you a couple of questions, and that's basically it.
Could maybe some of you give some examples around the actual role-play tasks you were given or some of the scenarios you might have had to, you had to respond to?
I can go for this. So, one of my international roleplays was, it was a company, I do entrepreneurship, and it was a company that was doing subscription-based beauty and fitness products. So they would send out boxes to their members each month, and they contained products kind of along those lines that were sourced from local businesses. And so the problem was that you needed to come up with a new product to add to the product mix that targeted a new target demographic, and their current target demographic was females aged thirty to forty. So you needed to add a new product, have a new target demographic, and then come up with a marketing plan to market that new product that you came up with to that new target demographic.
Great.
Can I ask a question, Dr. Sawyer?
Of course.
So how many minutes did you have to do that?
Ten.
I suppose it's very real life for some, for some people, that that's not a lot of time to do a demographic analysis of us.
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely say it's definitely tests your on-the-spot thinking in these kind of scenarios. The exam is the one that you can prep a little bit more for. I mean, the students practice roleplays every week in the chapter meetings, so that's like kind of the best you can do. They do with each other and give like feedback and everything, but so each advancement is based on their exam score and their role-play scores. You had two multiple roleplays, though.
Yeah, so at the district level, it's only one day, and you're only there for like a shorter amount of time, and so you only take one role-play, and so your exam score is a third of your score, and then the one role-play you take is two-thirds of your score. But then at the state and international level, you take two roleplays, and then each role-play and your exam score each count for one-third of your score.
Maybe share a couple of other, and some of the other categories, some of the scenarios you were faced with to give people a sense of what you were, what you had to respond to.
Yeah, so basically, mine was, I'm in apparel and accessories marketing, so one of mine was at a boutique store. They kind of tailored towards like a luxury feel and that kind of thing. So they wanted to see whether they should introduce point-of-sale tipping at the end of each purchase, and we had to determine whether that would benefit the company or no. And so they had like different tailors that were like hand-helping the people, and they were providing hands-on experience. So I said, yeah, they should, because it'll like incentivize employees to put a better effort, and it'll increase the brand image, because, you know, the employees are providing better customer service. And so I was basically trying to like promote a plan which would help like make it frictionless and, yeah, improve the wages.
That's terrific. How about in finance?
So for our, I think there is this person who is trying to take out a loan for two portions of vehicle, and we will act as the financial advisors on how, like I think we have to explain on how to credit score, come out of the calculated, and then how do they get the best interest rate for their loan. And of course, since we compete at ICDC, we also try to be more creative. So for me, I mentioned, I think, bet fund rate on basically how the interest work, as well as order graph and props to help my role-play, but I think Nan can talk more a bit more.
Sure. So I guess last year, I also competed in personal finance. I think Trung covered pretty effectively what was the topic this year. Last year, the question I got essentially internationals was essentially you have a bank manager coming up to you, like your client, and he's asking, he's facing depositor stress, or he or she is facing depositor stress. So essentially, the banks make long-term loans, and doesn't have a lot of cash on hand. So it's like, when you have depositors come in and want to make their withdrawals, the bank's facing some sort of fiscal stress on that area. And so the question basically was, how do you solve this sort of deposit stress? And the solution I provided to the bank was basically, keep it a secret, like you don't want your depositors to know you don't have enough cash. And the second thing, the second thing I said was, governments, Federal Reserve offers the ability, it's called a discount window. They lend money at very low rates to banks when they're like in times of crisis, and because this bank did offer, because this bank did have like solvent long-term loans, it wasn't like they were giving them money against like insolvent loans. So the regulators sort of had the authority to give them the short-term lending facility they needed. So I said, keep it a secret, don't tell anyone, and take some money from the government.
I think I saw a movie with George Bailey with it at one point.
And then students get, have, try to get a little creative during the role-play, just to differentiate, obviously in front of the judge. The benefit of having multiple roleplays is you'll have different judges kind of giving perspective, so it's a little more balanced. But Christian, I was thinking about, not to put you in the spot, but I was thinking about when you use like an acronym. Do you recall that? So like just to make yourself stand out a little bit more.
To add to Mr. A's point, competitors are graded not only on their, how well they answer performance indicators, right? So that's your actual knowledge of a topic, but they're also graded a third of their rubric. It's a hundred-point rubric for role-play. A third of their rubric is on twenty-first century skills, so how verbose they are, how creative they are, do they exhibit systems thinking, et cetera, et cetera. If they're in a partnership, how old are the teammates work together? Do they actually share the workers? One person doing everything? So it's important not only to answer your performance indicators, but to also be verbose and creative, especially at the state level, and especially at the international level, because if you get to that international level, you know, you're obviously in the top, like ten percent, even less in the country. You're very, very good at what you do. Everybody's knowledgeable at that level. What's important and what can differentiate yourself is that creativity, right? So, like Mr. A said, so a couple of things I did at ICDC were, I like created an acronym. We're only given pieces of paper to work on, so you have to really be creative. You gotta, you know, rip paper, everybody's ripping papers. You gotta like, I designed a website several times at the state's level for like information management-based roleplays. Like you need to have to draw the URL, pictures, all of that. I even did, at one of my state roleplays, I actually drew a picture of a donut and coffee, and I offered donuts and coffee to my judge as a role-play. But just to add some depth, and again, differentiate yourself from all the other competitors, because these judges are seeing, you know, twenty, thirty people a day, and they're talking about the same exact things. So really, to get to a high performance level, you have to be, you know, well-spoken, and of course, creative in, you know, many different ways.
Before, I have a couple of questions, I think, with the committee and folks watching would be interested in terms of DECA overall as an experience in a club. Is there anything else around the competition or in that context that you haven't been able to share yet that you think might be worth making sure people understand around that, between the roleplays and the exam, and the experience of the competition part of DECA?
Yeah. Anybody want to take, think about the, I mean, the entire conference is, there's so much going on, right? The social experience of it in itself, I'm sure that's something that I feel like, when everybody comes back, the energy around it, and the energy there is just, I mean, meeting, I think James, I think you mentioned this in the hallway, just meeting that many people across the.
People from all different states, just getting like a lot of unique perspectives, like a ton of the people in entrepreneurship, like have started their own businesses, just like talking around the table before we went into the competition, just hearing about what people are doing and like what opportunities they're taking is really interesting, and it gives you new ideas as well.
I mean, in the networking element alone, I know, Christian, you're done a really good job with just connecting with people and staying in touch with people that you've met at these conferences. You know, DECA is big in Massachusetts, but when you start getting to an international level, you see how really big it is in other states. So I think you've made some connections, I'm sure you all have, but with people from all over the country and the world, so one, does anybody want to share the PINs? It's such a great thing to share. We should have brought somebody in. Anyone want to talk about the PIN exchange?
Do you want to? Okay.
So, for PIN trading, basically, each state and each country has a specific type of PIN. So this year for us, it was lobsters, and so each PIN is obviously worth a different amount because of how special they look. And so at ICDC, like pretty much all the time, like people, when they're waiting for their rounds, they'll be trading PINs. They're constantly trading. People would even like pay for PINs for like specific ones, like the China PIN or the Hawaii PIN, or like trading hats and things like that. So it's just a great way to connect with people. A lot of DECA has a social aspect, so even at states, we have like DECA Night, which is a night where we have like a dance floor and things like that, just so that DECA members can connect. But then at ICDC, I'm sure you guys all heard of our Universal Experience, where we got to go to Universal and connect with other DECA members from other countries and other states. But then the PIN training just helps us just one-on-one, face-to-face conversations with different people, and people would even like save each other's numbers so they can trade PINs later. And so it was just a great way to meet new people and just also learn about other people's backgrounds and things like that.
Yeah, it's a really good icebreaker, and it just gets everybody forced into conversation, you know? Why is your PIN that way? You know, like what does that represent in your state? Those kind of things. And people wear their PINs around their lanyard for the week, so it just kind of keeps a ability to continually connect with people throughout the conference.
So in the bit of time we have left, I'm maybe going from, in this conference, just to have a sense of this, if I understood it, I mean, the state conference, and for people to understand, this is the second year of the DECA club at Shrewsbury High School, and the total membership now is about what?
Two, we have two-hundred-and-twenty students.
So I think it's the largest club at Shrewsbury High School at this point.
We had, we had sixty in our first year and last year, so we, yeah, we grew a lot. And I used to think maybe the excitement would kind of, but I'm finding there's a lot of people that want to make a comeback, you know? It's like you get a taste of it, and then you want to like, now I know exactly what I'm going to do to like, the secret sauce to get ahead, so yes, people are ready to make a comeback.
So clearly, people are having a good experience, that our students are, and then some of the excitement about, you know, the district level and then the state competition, and then the international competition that you had the opportunity to go to, and this was in Los Angeles, at the Anaheim Convention Center. And if I read correctly, I think there's, there were like twenty-five thousand students and advisors there from all over the world. This was not a small conference.
Huge.
So, I mean, this is really a huge event, and the state not nearly as large as that, but pretty significant in Boston, a lot of people from all over the state.
About four thousand.
Yeah. I mean, it's a very popular, and I really appreciate, and I appreciate, Mr. Andriola being willing to bring this, this club to Shrewsbury High School and the student leaders who brought it forward, many of whom are sitting here this evening. And so maybe just the last portion here, competition's one part of it, but it's also you're meeting weekly, there's a leadership aspect to this also. What are some of the skills, other than the very specific business skills, or your twenty-first century skills, what are some of the things that you feel you're gaining from being part of DECA these last couple of years? Just sort of the overall experience, what do you see as the benefits? Why do two-hundred and this many students at Shrewsbury High School want to be part of this? What's the, what's the attraction? What do you get out of it?
I can talk about this. I think that in general, just like when you're, you only, as I mentioned, you only have ten minutes to come up with like complex solutions, and so just thinking on your feet is a very valuable skill, whether it's like interviews or anything else for the rest of your life, being able to think on your feet when you're asked questions that you're not necessarily expecting, and coming up with good answers is a very valuable skill. And I think there's just a lot of people at the high school in general who are interested generally in business and want to pursue something along those lines. And I think also, being able to do teams for DECA is also a big draw for people, because it can be daunting going into roleplays and doing tests by yourself. And so being able to do that with a partnership and doing it with your friends brings a lot of people in. And especially after our first year, our members had such a good time that word of mouth traveled, and that's why we had so many more people come in this year.
Adding on to that, a lot of, at least our chapter in general, we try to hold a lot of events to like keep people engaged, like in terms of like social events and stuff like that. This year, we like held one at Panera and one at like Chick-fil-A, just for people to like get to meet each other, and on the side, it also serves as a little fundraiser for us. And I think like the fact that we hold all these events and the fact that DECA as a whole, they make their competitions very appealing through their like stages and like their universal trips and all that, people really come in the club with a goal, and they kind of form a community within the club, and that's a lot of what keeps them engaged, because once someone joins, they like bring along, they bring their friends, and it kind of, like they create a community around it.
That's great. Well, I'm sure the school committee has questions and comments, but this is really terrific, and congratulations, and really very proud of all the work that you've done.
Great. Thank you. Very impressive. Colleagues, questions, comments? Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, I, the, some of you could do a growth chart here. To go to six, from sixty students to two-hundred-and-twenty is a pretty phenomenal growth, and I remember when we, some of us were touring the high school, this was mentioned, like this is where the DECA kids try to meet, and they're like, they don't really fit in here anymore. You know, so it's, it's really awesome, and having the opportunity to, as you said, practice some really real-world skills. And I mean, business is really all about sort of who you know and how you, how you move it, right? And so those, getting, getting those opportunities to practice it is pretty incredible, and having the support, I see many of your family members here, for some of you going out to California, I have to imagine that was a really good time, which is great, great too. And I guess I'm wondering, what, what are we, what are you hoping for? And then for some of you, you know, you're, you've got a few more years with us, obviously some of you are moving on very, very soon, but what do we see as what's next for DECA? And is it predominantly a student-led in a lot of ways? It sounds like there's a lot of student, student-driven, so what do the students want to see as what's next for, for DECA?
I mean, we definitely want to see more chapter growth. I think our chapter is huge, but like there is a lot more interest for DECA in our school. So I think we want it to grow more, but we also, I think recently with a lot of the chapter growth, it has been a little disorganized.
it has been a little disorganized considering that we do have limited space and it's hard to keep people engaged. Especially as like, as people move up levels, there are some people who don't advance and then they kind of, kind of lose interest towards DECA. So it's definitely keeping that engagement and also keeping these meetings more organized. And that's something we definitely wanna work towards in the future.
Need your own version of PINs, but it, just the Shrewsbury, I get all two hundred of you to know, to know, to know each other. Well, I certainly think it's really great. I um, some of you probably know, Mr. Molina here at the end is quite good friends with my son, heard lots about the experience and getting ready and getting, getting suits and getting organized and being prepared and, you know, it's, it's, I think there's an incredible real-world experience here, um, that, that I'm so glad that you have the opportunity for. And I think we need to figure out as a, as a committee, how to make sure, if you continue that level of growth, where do we put you? Uh, but more importantly, what other supports do you need to make sure that we, um, that you have what you need? Cause clearly, clearly we're, we're on to something.
Yeah, we definitely um, add on to that as far as like, this space is definitely been a challenge, right? So we can't meet um, like we thought. So um, one of the things that we're, we experimented with and it's, and some of that like kind of business organization, idea organization happening. We formed like mentors this year and we didn't really think of it until further in the year, like hey, what do, what do we do this mentor program? So each of the officers had like responsibility for twenty-five students. That was their primary communication, their primary context. We were trying to make a way to have people feel connected, um, also so that two hundred people didn't come to me. So it was a little bit of a idea on my end too, so we did that and that helped, I would say, but, but it was later in the process. So now we know, right? So like the first year was just the formation and all the world around DECA and how to make it run and then the second year was like-
You need a good org, a good org chart for DECA, yeah.
So I'm glad you asked the question too, because we're trying to um, just today, we were talking again about how do we organize as a group next year? Cause we aren't sure yet, we, we have ideas and everybody, and we're debating and talking, but it's, it's forming and as we speak. And then I think what you mentioned, like just with reference to um, the dress and uh, I mean, that element alone is something that I see going to these conferences, just walking around in dress shoes all day. Different experience, right, like than we're used to, being dressed up, being in a hotel room with peers. It's just all those experiences are so valuable, um, and that's something I see with the students, like it's just so different. You're getting your food on your own and like planning your dinners and planning your, so that's kinda cool. And I think that's something that um, I see everybody come back with, with like a positive um, experience, develop, feel independent, I think, yeah.
Just in terms of like things, uh, looking forward in the future and what Mr. A was saying. I think for our club, since we're so big, a big thing is gonna be funding as well. Cause these DECA events are extremely expensive. I know um, for, at the state level, it was about five hundred dollars to five fifty. And then ICDC was around fifteen hundred and we did some uh, fundraising for that as well. But um, with such a big membership, it kind of brings down costs a little bit. But um, it's important that we get a lot of funding, especially for, so that we can include all of our members, cause that's a large cost uh, for many people, for everyone. Um, and so it's gonna be a really important thing moving on, just getting enough funding so that everyone can be included. That can be a big restriction factor.
Mr. Wensky, can I ask one follow-up question? You two gentlemen are wearing matching ties, is there a reason?
These are the ties that we got at ICDC.
Ah, okay, alright. I was wondering if it was connected to the PINs at all, alright.
They're, they're by state, they actually have the-
It looks like a Massachusetts on it, okay, thank you for representing us so well.
Yeah, that's the official DECA tie this year and the rest of us didn't get that memo to wear the ties. When they came in, I said, you didn't, we would have all. So, and they also had scarves too, DECA scarf, so.
That's great, Mr. Heffernan?
Um, I'm, I'm so impressed by this. Um, this is an amazing achievement for each one of you, but especially for a group that's just in year two, is truly amazing. Um, I actually went back to see when DECA came last year, um, some of the things. So the three big things that be looking forward to this school year was increasing awareness and student membership at Shrewsbury High School. I think that was done, sixty to two-twenty, is that what it was? Um, increased student qualifiers for competitions, I think that was done. Um, and then this is a good tag on to what you had just said, is increasing fundraising efforts to offset trip costs. So you were seeking partnerships with businesses. Do we feel that these are good um, items to keep for next year? Or are we, do we have like bigger plans for next year? I know you said you'd like to see two-twenty go up from there, but do you think you did a good job meeting those goals? And what are we thinking that the goals are going to be? Cause these were big goals that you seem to far surpass, what do we think about for next year?
So I think like last year our goals were like increase membership, hopefully drive down costs a little bit. So we were expecting this year like, okay, sixty for aggressive, it would be like a one-twenty. And then we opened up memberships, we're like, what? So um, certainly I think, we certainly had a one-on-one connection with more kids this year with the mentorship program. So what we're looking to next year is hopefully we can add on like more DECA leaders, cause um, obviously the seniors like going off to college. So by hopefully adding on more leaders to the DECA leadership team, we can make sure that even as our membership continues to grow, we can still keep that one-on-one connection that the students feel like they have with the leadership of the DECA Shrewsbury chapter.
I think another thing that we saw with the growth was the um, diversity of students that came in. We definitely reached different groups, um, which I think is really neat about DECA. I think we got people or they, people came to join that we didn't expect, right? It, you don't have to be, you're just academic type of student. We have people that were playing sports and the first year we say, I can't do it cause I play sports. But we found ways that they could. Um, yeah, you can't come to every meeting, but we're gonna try to provide supports for you to still be a member and come to the competitions while you also play sports. So we had a little bit of flexibility this year with like membership attendance and things like that, given that going to others, going to the conferences, I noticed other schools did have um, that kind of range of students that were coming. Um, so like, we felt like that really opened up a lot. That's I think what drove a lot more people in, just different groups were saying, hey, oh, you can do that and play hockey, okay. I can do that too, that's, that's something that we saw.
I was a business major undergrad in finance concentration in my graduate school and I, I just think about, like you're talking about, you had ten minutes to prepare. I would have a semester to do the same thing, so like I, you know, when I went, you were totally unprepared. You know, a performance indicator would not have known what that would be going in as a freshman. So you're going so much better prepared if you're gonna stay in business or entrepreneurship, what are you gonna study? I just think this is amazing to have these skills and as Ms. Heffernan said, networking, that's the biggest thing in business. You have to network, you have to be able to speak well and have those social skills, cause that's how you're gonna make connections, finance. That's how you're gonna find those clients. So I just think this is fascinating and amazing work. Thank you so much for stepping up and doing this. And I mean, that's a, that's a lot on top of your other duties as a teacher, so thank you very much. Um, I have a question around, how do you prepare? Like we talk a lot with speech and debate, how they prepare, how do you prepare? Are you reading the Wall Street Journal, like what, what are you doing to prepare for these?
So um, at weekly meetings, we do the role plays. So we usually will do that with an officer or with a partner. We have, there's a bunch of role plays online and then we have access to the DECA plus like the website, which has a bunch of practice role plays. And then for the exams, we do kind of the same thing, so we also do practice exams and there's also practice flashcards online. And then there's also a lot of resources from other schools that will have different practice tests and different practice role plays that we'll do. Um, I know for ICDC, like a lot of people will focus more on the exam because the exam tends to be much harder. Um, and then for role plays, it's obviously you have to practice that a lot to gain those skills. So it's something that we do a lot at weekly meetings too. Um, and then this year, some of the officers I know held like meetings after school that you could do private one-on-one, you know, on FaceTime call or things like that, which really helped. Um, or we just do them with our friends, which also helps a lot, because different friends that have different categories will have a new perspective. Like a lot of our judges might not know exactly what our category is about, so that just helps a lot with practicing as well.
Yeah, so um, another thing I think really helps when competing is just staying up to, up to date with current events. Um, I, I remember uh, last year, like when my topic was about depositors stress, like the news was about banks facing depositors stress. So if you just like read the news, Silicon Valley Bank, like this bank, that bank, you would be really well-prepared for the topic at hand. Because um, like sure you could read a textbook or like look online, but um, in terms of learning practically what's going on in the world, I think current events is like the best way to understand that knowledge, um, so yeah.
And Nathan doesn't wanna brag, but he reads the Wall Street Journal. And that shows. And then I also, Christian, I keep going back to our conversation when we were in California, like you had, um, when you did your role play, I remember you told me about a story you had just seen in the news, um, and you used that. So I think having those connections to the real world, what's happening impresses the judges.
It differentiates you from other people.
You've done your homework before, you got there.
And that's hard to do because you're, you don't know what your situation is gonna be. So you have to be somewhat aware of what's happening in the world and then you could pull it in based on what is positioned in front of you. And um, the other thing I wanna mention too, for those actually that might be watching, you, you can take a written project route, like if you're not somebody that is maybe good at that, kind of like on-the-spot thinking and coming up with ideas. There is a written project route for DECA members too. Tends to be a little bit longer, how many pages of the project?
Ten to twenty.
Ten to twenty, so there's like more work, so some people, you know, but if you're like, I need to plan and like present, and we had some people do that this year, like they just won't, felt more comfortable.
And I think that's also something that we can explore more in the future, cause we kinda have been focusing a lot more on role plays. But I think there's prepared role plays and then there's also written events. And DECA does like virtual business challenges, so there's a ton of aspects to it besides just role plays that we haven't even been able to focus on, because we've had so much on our plate, just figuring out what we're even doing. But I think in the future, um, since we've kinda figured out what we're doing now, then we can start to explore those alternate things.
There's scholarship opportunities too, I mean, there's just so many layers to DECA that it's, you know, we're still at the tip, hitting the iceberg. But then there's also just like community give, service type of opportunities. If you're passionate about a certain project, like mus- muscular dystrophy, we'll have a project and you can just submit for that one.
Yeah, they have so many like separate like opportunities besides competition. Like they had one where you fundraised for like pediatric cancer and they'll give you international recognition if you like earn a certain amount of money. And, or you like record a video about like, um, about, like they have various different competitions and they partner with different corporates which offer these competitions. And like if you win it, they give you scholarship money. And they also have like community service events, which you can organize to get like leadership spots to ICDC. So it's like when you sign up, you're not just signing up for the business aspect of it, it gives you a lot of like other life skills along the side.
That's great. And I think Daniel, for you, apparel and mark, it was apparel and accessories?
Yeah.
Uh, my son graduated in twenty-ten and he now works in sports or apparel. And I think if he had had this back then, it would have given him a, a, something to go into college with. No, I mean, you're getting this already and it's his passion, that's what he loves. So I, I just love hearing that you guys are getting this so much earlier. And I think for us also, for a school committee, um, hearing the resource needs that you have is very important for us as we plan budgets and we look at where needs are throughout the district, because this is, it's a club, but it's also providing this, these educational experiences for all of you, that's going to pay off in dividends in college, in life. So it's just great to hear, so thank you very much for everything that you're doing and for all the students, this is very impressive, so thank you.
And, and just if I could follow up on one thing on that, they, I couldn't do it without these students, especially the first-year ones. I mean, they're doing so much counseling with that type of work, like what is your interest area? What does um, entrepreneurship mean, what does that look like? You know, so right, we don't, a lot of guys going into business, they don't even know, right, we don't know yet. So like getting exposure, what does a marketing category look like? So with the year one students, that was a big help this year, just have, given that support, that one-on-one support of like helping people kind of hone in on like what might be your interest area? And then I see that a lot with like year two, like, yeah, I really love that area, I wanna do it again, or you know, I wanna move into a different hospitality. What is, what is hospitality, that always confuses, right? So we have to educate all these categories and the students help a lot with that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to extend my congratulations and I'm just so pleased to see that you represent such a wide grade span from ten, eleven and twelve. I just think that's really wonderful, um, that, you know, that we can see the growth from, you know, the, the younger kids to the older kids, so. Um, and I just wanna, I echo the comments that my colleagues have made. Thank you very much for presenting tonight, it's been really helpful.
Yeah, this is super impressive presentation, congratulations to you all. Um, as you were all talking about your various roles here, I, I kinda felt like I was sitting in a job interview. Like it, just so impressive, you're so well-presented uh, and knowledgeable uh, in, in the expertise that you are specializing in in these uh, in these competitions. Uh, and the growth is just outstanding. And I'm curious, like the inspiration uh, for you to start this club like two years ago? Did you ha, did you hear about, like, like was there a demand kinda brewing within the school or?
Yeah, so I had, when I first came to Shrewsbury, I had knowledge of DECA. Um, and I had thought about it and I think you had, what you, you had mentioned, like just with everything else I was doing, I was like, I don't know, right? Cause I knew it was like another huge world. Um, and I had, was it last year or the year before last, I had a couple of students come to me. Um, and I had kind of the passion for it, but I also didn't wanna be the only. So I had a couple of students come to me and express interest and I said, you know what? I feel it in you, I wanna do it, let's do it, let's just go for it and let's do it. And that's really how it formed, I said, let's try it. We reached out to the state chapter advisor, started the meeting process just with a small group, just sort of, what do we have to do? How do we form the chapter, all that, there's so much learning to it. Um, and you knew I was, some of these people were originals with me and it's just such a learning curve. Um, but I felt like given that there was that student passion too, that it would really work. And then I knew if um, I, they were behind it and I was behind it, so it just felt like the right time.
Yeah, and a couple of students led to sixty, led to two-twenty, I mean, that's pre- pretty remarkable, uh, to be safe and sound.
That was with a hard, hard deadline.
Yeah.
This is the last day we're taking.
Yeah, I mean-
As we're coming in on the last day, alright, we're none, we're good.
Sure.
And like they were coming in my room in the, at the eleventh hour with their forms, so.
Yep, I mean, to achieve such a high level in just the second year of existence is just outstanding, uh, really. Uh, tribute to you and, and all the work that you've done and all, all the students that participate in this club, just excellent. Um, and uh, how many districts in the state have this club, like roughly?
I wanna say, so there's seven districts, I wanna say there's about ten, fifteen in each district, um, so. Seventy to a hundred.
This is great, yeah.
I mean, we're matched up with, you know, the, the ones around us, Algonquin, Westboro, St. John's is in it, um, lots of our big ones, Crafton's in it, so.
It's like Blackstone Valley.
Blackstone Valley Tech, some of the technical high schools obviously are part of it. They might read district, cause our district actually has grown so much, probably partly because of us. Um, so they're talking about registering.
Oh, that's great, and just one final comment, Christian, you mentioned creating acronyms. I've gotta say that that's a great skill to have, uh, get used to it. I live in a world of bottomless acronyms and they just keep growing, so uh, yeah, no, I just had to, just struck a chord with me, so. No, but congratulations to you all, uh, really excited to have you here and just a tremendous achievement, so. Dr. Sawyer, additional comments?
Great, no, I said earlier, just really proud of the work you've done, it's really phenomenal and uh, would love to have you come up and shake the committee's hand and get a certificate. Uh, maybe those here, give a round of applause to our student members.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Good job. Thank you, thank you so much.
Nice job, well done.
Congratulations, great work. Alright, thanks Jason, appreciate it.
Alright. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It'd be hard, hard to top that. Uh, the next item on our agenda is another time-scheduled appointment for the acceptance of gifts and also we need to vote. Uh, so per school committee policy nine-one-one, gifts of five thousand dollars or more must be formally accepted by the school committee. Uh, Wind Waste Innovations, formerly Wheelabrator Technologies, has offered to make a donation of thirty-five thousand dollars, made possible through Selco Solar Farm at the Shrewsbury Ash Monofil. Uh, Wynn hopes to allocate seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars for supporting the reaching independence. Through supported employment, also known as RISE program in Maple and Maine. And another seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars to be allocated, uh, for ongoing efforts to strengthen career exploration programming at Shrewsbury High School. Uh, the district would like to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Don Muzel, uh, director of Ash Monofil's, uh, for his ongoing and generous support of Shrewsbury Public Schools. Uh, we also, uh, need to accept a donation, uh, from Celebrate Zoe's Life. Uh, the fund has offered to make a donation of five thousand dollars to RISE program and Maple and Maine for young adult programming. That promotes the arts wellness and service learning. Uh, this is a charitable fund that is committed to ending teen suicide. Celebrating Zoe's Life Fund is managed by the Boston Foundation, a five oh one C three charitable organization. Zoe Wolf is celebrated creativity, local action, personal achievement and supporting others. The Wolfess family seeks, uh, to celebrate Zoe's life with the community in which she lived. And here, uh, to speak on both, uh, donations is Ms., uh, Dr. Jane Lazzott.
Thank you very much. Yes, I would, um, ask that you accept the, uh, two donations. One in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars from Wind Waste Innovations. I had the, um, a great benefit of going to Wind Waste a couple of weeks ago. Where Mr. John Brockie, S H S, um, environmental science teacher, um, was visiting with a number of students from the AP Environmental Science class. And they had had a wonderful day together and this is not the first time they've been there. They visit annually. And, uh, Wind Waste is just very generous with their giving of time and energy. And in this case, the seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars to support our career exploration, um, programming, internships, job shadowing, in addition to, um, the seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars to support that similar programming for our RISE students and Maple and Maine. And secondly, as Mr. Wensky, uh, mentioned, Celebrate Zoe's Life, the Wolfess family is, um, looking forward to donating the five thousand dollars to, um, celebrate Zoe's life. And, um, by donating funds to programming that offers the arts opportunity to engage in the outdoors, um, and experience also job and other, um, internship related activities for our students at Maple and Maine. And that, those are the two asks.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Lazzott. Appreciate, uh, you establishing these really good partnerships. A big thank you to Wind Waste, uh, to Celebrate Zoe's Life Fund, uh, for these generous donations. And we do have to vote, uh, to accept these. Um, so colleagues, I think I'll take two separate votes. Just going to my previous chair for acknowledgement there. Uh, all right. So vote number one, uh, so I need a motion that the school committee vote to accept a gift of thirty-five thousand dollars from Wind Waste Innovations with seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars for supporting the reaching independence through supported employment, RISE program and Maple and Maine. And seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars to be allocated for ongoing efforts to strengthen career exploration programming at Shrewsbury High School.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Uh, the second vote, uh, is where I will need a motion that the school committee vote to accept a gift of five thousand dollars for Celebrate Zoe's Life Fund to the RISE program in Maple and Maine. For young adult programming that promotes the arts wellness and service learning.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favors, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion carries unanimously. Uh, Dr. Sawyer?
If I could just add one comment as well, uh, before, uh, Dr. Lazzott moves and we move to the next agenda item. Uh, two things. One thing I, I neglected to say earlier and certainly is connected to the career technical education piece that Dr. Lazzott's been working hard on. Um, is that Mr. Bzilow is actually at the high school, the Performing Arts Awards are this evening as well. So he is there and he certainly wanted to pass along his congratulations to the students, uh, in the DECA club, which obviously he and the other administrators have supported throughout the year. I want to acknowledge Dr. Lazzott, uh, in her role, uh, in terms of, uh, part of her responsibilities in, around community partnerships is development. Um, and the, the connection she's been able to make with Wind Waste Innovations, uh, and with other philanthropic en- environments that the Wolfesses uh, certainly have been, uh, uh, on our minds the last few years and certainly, uh, closely connected to, to Dr. Lazzott. Uh, but, uh, at town meeting, I think that will be certainly, uh, uh, reporting out that this has been a particularly strong year for soliciting funding from other sources. Competitive grants, um, as well as philanthropic donations. And, uh, we know that th- these are very valuable, um, uh, opportunities for us to, uh, get resources to do things that are part of our strategic priorities. And I, I just want to thank Dr. Lazzott for her efforts, um, throughout the year. And, and, uh, this evening, we may have more before the year's out. We'll have to see. But, uh, again, it's, it, it takes work and time and connections with people to, to make this happen. So I wanted to say thank you before we moved on.
Great. Thank you so much.
I'd also like to invite the community, we have a Zoe's Rock Celebration of Painting and whatnot on June first at Maple and Maine from ten to noon. Tabletop pies have donated three hundred pies. Wegmans have donated enough food and drink for two hundred and fifty people. And the Wolfesses are kindly donating resources. Um, so please come out and join us and we'll have some Zoe's Rock painting time.
Great.
If you're interested. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lazzott. Appreciate that. All right. Uh, the next item on our agenda is under curriculum. An update on leadership professional development, uh, from our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Ms. Amy Clouder. Uh, in her report, Ms. Clouder will discuss the work, uh, that the district leadership team has done to develop instructional leadership skills aimed at the district's strategic priority of closing opportunity and achievement gaps among different student demographic groups. Ms. Clouder?
Thank you. When we talk about teaching and learning, I'm often describing what's happening with students in our classrooms. And I'm every bit of proud, uh, every bit is proud of the work our leaders do to further, uh, teaching, learning, um, and building their own repertoire of skills. So my focus today will be kind of the professional learning that we've done as a district leadership team. And when I talk about that team, it's a big group of, of people incorporating not just the curriculum, um, specialists that I work with, but also the assistant principals, the principals and other district and building based leaders. So, uh, as just to ground everybody in why this is important, I think when we think about time, um, focusing on a few thing, key things that are going to result in improvement is really important. And, um, personally and professionally, time is one of our resources that is really scarce. And particularly in schools, when we get pulled in different directions. Um, but we're really fortunate as a district and I was reminded of that today at a conference I was at. Um, that we have a strategic plan that helps us identify a few common commitments. And then able, enables leadership to kind of dig specifically into how their roles intersect with those commitments. And thinking about that then facilitates learning for everybody else. And I just want to acknowledge the really important work, I think, um, Dr. Sawyer has started and, and we've done together to kind of maintain that cycle of having some shared focus and then thinking about what that looks like in terms of learning and outcomes for students. And then what that looks like in terms of learning for our educators, um, and our leadership. This year when we focused on, um, learning, we're kind of in between our, our last plan and our new plan. Uh, we had three strategic priorities that we mapped out in August and have held constant throughout the year. Our, those focused areas were equity, instructional leadership and wellbeing. And learning, uh, took different forms. Uh, the longer day-long meeting in August gives us, uh, time to launch a book study. And so we began reading The Good Life together with the focus on, um, two things. Really thinking about how we cultivate a sense of wellbeing as leaders, um, while serving others. Because often, um, district leaders and, and building based leaders in particular, absorb kind of the stress that educators are feeling. And learning how to manage that, um, and continue to support and recognize when people are experiencing unhealthy stress is really important. Um, this is a really good resource around that. Um, and I also want to acknowledge kind of Dr. Jane Lazzott, um, and, uh, Principal of Patton Scott Mulcahy, who kind of organized and facilitated the discussion, empowering lots of different members of the leadership forum to take part. Because one of the other outcomes that we had in mind was really featuring, um, multiple skillsets on the team with each other. We didn't want, uh, just a few facilitators. And so this year we had a structure that really enabled a whole host of, um, people to lead various sections of the book, um, with great results. So that facilitation was really welcome and I think, um, highly engaging for everyone. We also focused our learning in different ways. Uh, so all district leaders engaged in actually two book studies this year. The second one is featured on this slide. Um, and I think it's a helpful example of taking that one focus of equity and looking at what that learning looked like in different roles. So all of the district leadership team was engaged in using this, um, case study protocol for thinking about how we respond to examples where inequity can happen in school settings. Um, what do we do when we're faced with schools that have different funding systems and, uh, you know, field trips? Um, how do we respond when, um, there are different situations, uh, where a student might experience bias? Uh, and how do we navigate, um, some of those difficult situations? So we now have a protocol for thinking about how we monitor for and recognize bias when it shows up. Cause we're human and it's inevitable that it will. And also how we respond kind of consistently to issues of kind of microaggressions and, um, where we need to take a strong stance really quickly. Uh, but we want to do that in a consistent way. We also focused on instructional equity. What does educational excellence look like? What does it mean to make sure that all students experience access to rigorous curriculum? And so we developed a shared vision for instructional practices that close opportunity achievement gaps. Um, and we hired, you know, we looked at how we hire for a teacher differentiation. What does that look like when we're looking for equity so that our students and our teachers can see themselves in each other? Um, we looked at bias in the hiring process, which is a really different process than looking for bias in school settings. And kind of thinking about how our, um, really outstanding, uh, processes for running searches could be even more improved by thinking about how to orient search teams to look at bias. We also collaborated outside the district with outside organizations. And, uh, I credit DUCI, um, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Sorry, gotta watch out for my own acronyms, um, for partnering with lots of outside groups that are nonprofits that advance this work. So, um, Meg Belcito and, uh, the Student Services Team, together with Dr. Lazzott, were very engaged, uh, for, uh, this year. And I think the beginning of last year with the social emotional behavioral team. And you'll probably hear more about that in the future because that's their area of expertise. Um, I've been working with the, uh, English Language Education Director Christina Manos with Support Ed, who's providing some technical expertise on how we respond to, um, high school English learners that come to us as newcomers at the high school level. The talent acquisition team I mentioned has been led by Barb Malone and her team. Um, and in previous presentations, I've talked about the benefit of participating in the Mass Tier Literacy Network with outside consultant Kristen Osborne, who's helped us with the K six implementation of the new, new curriculum. Um, so today I'm going to focus more on an example around, uh, our work with the TNTP, which, um, is a nonprofit organization really geared around focusing on teaching and learning and how to ensure instructional practices that kind of raise the, raise the bar for all students. And so we had, we're in our second year of collaborating with them in a three-year cycle. And that's looked like implementing math curriculum standards, uh, last year with the, with the high school. And, um, it's continued. We're looking at grades five and six, um, with Melissa McCann, Heather Galaski and the teams at Sherwood. And then strengthening instruction in the humanities by looking at grade nine as a gateway experience all students have, um, as they enter the high school. Because every student takes a world civ class and every student takes an English class. It enabled us to really think about what are the different experiences kids are having in, as ninth graders. Um, and I just want to recognize Principal Todd Bzilow, who would be here but is at another event. Um, Director of English, Liza Trombley, Director of Social Studies and History, Jen DiFrancesca. Um, Director of Special Education at the high school, Megan DeLeon, Team Chair, Alicia Harrigan. And grade nine teachers who, um, very nicely hosted us on four different site visits. Um, and then partnered within their departments to kind of think about how we use the information we gained about how students show up to think about how to better engage them. So we focused our, our learning on, with student in, outcomes in mind as well. So we're thinking about district initiatives that touch all levels and then thinking specifically about how we want to change how, um, students are empowered and performing. And so I mentioned implementing the new curriculum K six and we had a, a soft adoption this year and will go to everybody next year. Um, thanks to the funding from that grant and the support of the Mass Tier Literacy Initiative. Um, TNTP has really enabled us to think about a structure for continuous improvement called the Plan Do Study Act PDSA cycle. Um, where we looked at what are the systems that are in place for, for looking at, um, how we recognize student experiences and how we coach people to make them, um, richer. And, you know, we all want to see ultimately students that are as empowered as the ones that were just presented for us. Uh, we want to see that not just when they're showing up for clubs that are in their passion, but when they're showing up for everyday instruction. And one of the things we've recognized and we're hearing from teachers was that post-pandemic, kids were more passive than they'd been before. And teachers were thinking, okay, if they're not, what do I do when they don't answer? I have a really great question, but having a really great question, if kids aren't participating, kind of leaves me kind of stuck. Um, and so thinking a little bit about how we structure things in classrooms so that we engage kids. How do we use total participation techniques? How do we establish protocols, uh, was part of our first focus. Um, TNTP has a classroom observation tool. And again, the focus of the tool is to really look at student experience. It's not, uh, to evaluate teachers. Um, and the goal is really to conduct a walkthrough and see what the trends are. Um, and one of the, one of the, there's different parameters. So one of them is looking at the, a culture of learning in the classroom. Are kids engaged from start to finish? One is looking at high quality texts. Are we, do we have good materials in front of kids? Another is looking at questions and tasks. What are students being asked to do and how are they participating in student discourse? And we use that lens to kind of walk through and see trends across and then think about how that would impact where we wanted to first identify a plan of action and then what we would do about it and walk it through. We have four, uh, visits on site with somebody who flew in from Indiana to kind of join with the team and help us think about that. And that was really helpful because we also calibrated, this is how I would rate that engagement. I think it's mostly, do you think it's somewhat? Like are we making that determination? Um, and just sharpening that lens with leaders is really important because leaders are, are the conduit through the communication to teachers flows. And I think people felt like, uh, when they're leading and they're not leading alone, that that's a really powerful thing too. Um, so we had every, um, every leader of buildings. All principals were engaged in instructional learning walks with different focuses. So the elementary focus was on employing foundational reading skills because that was the common thread K, K eight. Um, at the high school, they were focusing narrowly using the TNTP protocols. And one of the things that results from all that work is really thinking about, um, managing change. We often fall into a kind of a predictable pitfall and I don't think we're alone. And thinking that if we buy materials, educators will use them. They'll know exactly what to do. And I think as a principal, I was often guilty of this and Kelly, who's I think sitting behind me would say, okay, that was a great presentation. What do you want to do with this presentation at the end of the meeting? And her voice is in my head when I think about professional development. Um, because I think clarity is really helpful. We want all of our educators to have skills and resources to be successful. And so professional learning for leaders falls under this piece of skills and resources. Um, because again, if leaders are, are really clear on what the outcomes for students are and how to get there, then they can provision, uh, the teachers that work for us so that they can be successful. And this is a good helpful reminder about, you know, sustaining focus on a commitment takes a, a long, long-term effort. Um, we have the vision and, and the mobilization in our strategic plan. But if we don't pay attention to skill building, then we're going to get confusion. If, if we don't, uh, uh, in anxiety, if we don't pay attention to how we give people resources and they feel frustrated and, and, you know, res- um, resist. So thinking a little bit about how all of these components are really important if we're going to be successful is kind of a good reminder around the investment of professional learning, which can sometimes feel like it's not urgent. But it is really important, um, if we're going to think about not just how our educators and students are successful, but how our schools as whole, as whole places are. And I, I just want to talk about, you know, we did instructional walks at all of the levels. And I'm going to focus, um, you know, always proud of our educators and the work they every, do every day makes a huge difference for students. This year I'm especially proud of, and of their response to instructional walkthroughs, which we've said give us an occasion to not just. which we've said give us an occasion to not just observe what's happening, but celebrate our successes and, and also think about what are our next steps? How does what's happening in reality in the classroom shape what we know teachers need next? Because we wouldn't ever think that for students, one training, one day, one lesson is going to result in everybody reaching proficiency. And the same thing is true for adult learning. We need to be thinking about, okay, what incremental changes can we make to have an even better outcome? And I'm sharing data from the high school walkthroughs because I have it, because I didn't collect it. D N T P did. Part of building trust with educators with the instructional walkthroughs, especially since literacy is so new, is saying, we're going to gather this information and share it with you. We're not writing it down. It's not part of evaluation. It's, it's really part of shaping future PD lessons. But this is part of the observational checklist. We were looking at a culture of learning. The question for a culture of learning is, are all students engaged in the work of the lesson from start to finish? And the text is small. So over here, we have, this is site visit one, site visit two, site visit three. And the colors are yes, mostly. The gray is somewhat, and the darker gray would be not yet. So you can see, even on the first site visit, the culture of learning for ninth grade in Shrewsbury, in the classrooms we visited, which was thirteen on this first day, was pretty strong. You know, ninety-two percent, yes, totally engaged or somewhat engaged. Stayed pretty consistent, but you can see from the first visit to the third visit, the leap in absolutely everybody being engaged was really considerable. You following me with that? So we moved the yes, absolutely everybody from a smaller chunk to a bigger chunk. And then we have most, we don't have anybody who's only somewhat engaged by the third visit. So part of it is not, understanding that when we're observing trends and reporting on them, we can be strong and then get even stronger. I think the other part that's really impressive is when we looked at questions and tasks, which is something we, we developed an action plan around. In our first site visit, it's the first time we see kind of this darker gray, right? This is not yet. We're not yet seeing all students engaged in questions and tasks that deepen their understanding. You can see this shifting. And to me, that's a real testament to educators thinking about, okay, if we have clarity about what we're looking for, we want all students engaged in high quality, answering high-quality questions and getting charged with assigned work. Can really see a leap in kind of the student experience that they're having. And I give the team at the high school, again, Todd, Liza, Jen, Megan, Alicia, a lot of credit in, in engaging in that work and preserving time to do that because all of our directors are teachers and leaders. And preserving time to collaborate in service of this initiative, I think, was really powerful. So by adjusting the sequence of instruction, we saw a huge change in the number of students with disabilities and the number of students who are English learners having comfort in exhibiting with, and talking with their peers. And we know from the literacy adoption that speaking aloud in class is a rehearsal for writing. So if you think about this impact on skills for having just that many more students engaged in answering questions, hearing what the vocabulary that their peers are using, having that rehearsal orally before they go to writing, that's, that's game-changing for students. And, and yet, I think it's uncomfortable to say, okay, we have to get better at something. But look what happens when we do. So that's just a little taste of how the work we invest in, in terms of the leadership level, impacts kind of what happens at the classroom level. And I appreciate the opportunity to kind of tell you, give you a little glimpse of that, and I welcome any questions you have.
Any colleagues, questions, comments? Oh, Erin.
Just want to thank you for the report. It was extremely helpful, and I love to see how it's tied to our strategic priorities that we established. It's, and I'm also happy to see that D E S I was able to give you some resources to help with getting some of this work off the ground, which is wonderful. I did have a question about the, the one, two, and three site visits, just the time periods, when, like, how much time elapsed between those three visits?
So because T N T P contracts with the state, they have a really tight timeline. And we had to have the first visit before September twenty-ninth. So it was like, okay, we're gonna have this, we're, we're gonna get ready. The other two site visits happened, the last site visit happened in early April. So between September and April, so it's pretty much a six-week cycle for visits. In between site visits, we also had team meetings and the directors and the building-based team and I did some work on our own. So the site visit is really the opportunity for the consultant to come through and do what the directors were doing on their own and to kind of lead the team through a process of, okay, of all the things that we're seeing, what are the wins we want to celebrate? And how, how are we going to message that back to the, the departments? And then what are the things to focus on that you guys have in common that would make real gains for students? It was exciting.
That's great. Thank you.
I have a question around the, so you said it's a walkthrough. Is it a visual observation? Is there, you know, especially at the high school level? Or do the students fill out survey? How, how are you making those?
We don't instruct, interrupt instruction. We really just walk in, into classrooms and watch for about ten to fifteen minutes. It depends what's happening. We might walk in and walk out if there's a quiz, for example. Like, nobody wants six adults in the back of the classroom during a quiz. We might split into two teams of three because one of the things we found is that it was, you know, even though we were trying not to be disruptive and teachers were very accommodating, it's disruptive to have six adults walk into a classroom. So sometimes we would just trade off on visiting classrooms. But it's, it's sitting in the, in the classroom and scripting kind of what's happening. What are the questions that are being asked? How many students are participating? What are kids doing individually? How many students are attending at various points? You know, what is the, you know, one of the questions we've heard is kind of how the iPads are functioning in classrooms. So I was looking with a really sharp lens at, okay, what are they doing? That kind of thing. We did sometimes have opportunities to say to kids, you know, what's happening in this class? Did you feel prepared? You know, but only if it seemed like it was the right thing to do. We really didn't want to put individual students on the spot.
And then Ms. Clowder, then there's an observational checklist, and that's what creates the data.
Yes. So I create an individual checklist. Everybody walking through does the same thing. And then we have this facilitated conversation with the consultant where they say, okay, so how did you score this element of classroom engagement? And there's six elements for each of those areas that I read out loud. So for classroom culture, there's six different questions to answer. And you have to say, okay, I said this. What did you say? Oh, you said mostly, and I said yes. And then you're like, let's go back into our notes. What, you have to defend why you made that accommodation and come to consensus. So the data is pooling what we all came to consensus, what, you know, the percentage of yeses for each of those things.
Yeah. Thanks very much for the, the report. And frankly, your presentation has a lot more information even than the report to kind of like for us to understand where, where, where you're going. I, a couple of things, when I think about sort of what, a lot of what this work is, it's sort of like managing change, right? And, and that's hard sometimes, yet exciting, of course, opportunities. And then it, it seems like what I, what I really appreciate about the classroom visits is there's a lot of focus and attention on the use of that class time, right? You have really limited amount of class time and sort of how are we using it? How are we making sure it's high quality? So I'm certainly really thrilled about that. Two things that I'm just sort of wondering about, if they're on the radar, and it seems like this is probably the right places where we're thinking of some of those like bigger, bigger pieces. At the high school level, particularly when you, when you noted the focus on the ninth grade sort of humanities, that's sort of the space where I've, I've wondered, just as a parent, you have an opportunity where everyone takes the same class, but why is that the one class that we don't have differentiated levels for World Civ? Like, what's the thinking there and why, when everything else is, you know, an A, an honors, maybe like, why, why, why we've done that? And, and how to make sure there's, continues to be some rigor in, in that, in that space. And the other one that I wonder about, the middle school math, I could be mistaken because the report said it was, it was middle school, but maybe this is more focused on Sherwood. But as we think about things and the resources, I like your, your chart, right, about all the things that, that you need. One of the resources we've certainly heavily invested in the district is the, is around Alex and Alex as a, as a, as a tool. But how do we think about what that action plan is and what the uses of it to make sure that it's quality time both for the student and classroom? I will note that there are some places and spaces where I've seen class time being used for Alex, and I, I just wonder if that's the best use when we have so many, so few minutes for teachers to be with students? Or is that a skill-building, reinforcing, you know, cycling, cycling back? So is, is like this work, the spaces where some of those conversations are happening? Or is that happen at, in different places, I guess? I'm, I'm trying to understand sort of professional development and the change models for stuff that we want to kind of potentially think about or be critical about, how we might want to do things differently.
I think, again, you know, PD cycle is iterative. So there are things that you noticed that you planned on noticing, and there are things you noticed that you didn't plan on noticing that then become a part of a future action plan. So the question of how is leveling benefiting or limiting students was a really good one that we asked when we looked at classrooms. We had the point of comparison with English and World Civ leveled, not leveled. And we saw examples where I think we would argue for eliminating some levels because we want higher degree of rigor for all students. And then I think the same, same thing is true in terms of if, if we eliminate the rigor, what's the line between kind of consistency and making sure we're meeting the needs of the students in this particular class at this particular time? And those are things directors wrestle with a lot. So yes, those were, those were good times to have conversations and particularly valuable times to have outside consultants to give us perspectives from other high schools, not just within Massachusetts. Because T N T P works with, I think at this point, every state. They've got fingers everywhere. But certainly within Massachusetts, we had different facilitators who could say, you know, these are different ways of thinking about high school models. And that was powerful.
Great. Additional questions, comments?
Maybe I misheard you, but did you say that there was going to be a total four visits? Or is that internally us doing four visits or were the outside?
The commitment with the outside is that we host somebody who flies in and does four site visits with us all day. We actually benefited from having a consultant who stayed two days, a half-day each day to, to flex because our high school schedule is complicated. And that was really appreciated by the directors because they didn't have to miss class in order to do this. But the, the commitment that we make to T N T P is that we will host a site visit with a consultant four times over the course of a year.
So would there be another, more data that comes? So for those?
So we have data from the fourth site visit. Yes, I just don't have it tabulated from him. So I just focused on the first three.
Any other questions, comments? No? Well, thank you for the report. I always appreciate the continuous focus on professional development. It's really important, especially to share best practices with other, from other perspectives. And managing change, as Ms. Heffernan said, is, is, it can be a grind at times, for sure. So it's, it's great to see the progress, even, even just the, the little wins, I think, is important to celebrate, you know, to continue to encourage this, this practice. So thank you.
Yeah. Teachers want the best for kids, and I want the best for teachers.
Dr. Sawyer, any additional comments?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, there's a little bit of a different angle on some of the things we report out and we will be reporting out on in future meetings, both in the rest of the spring, but also in early next fall, as we typically do, depending on when, when data's available, around, you know, our, our strategic plan and our goals for this year and how we've achieved them. I think the, the piece here around how ongoing work, I mean, I, I know that, you know, we certainly, you learn in sort of School Administration 101, effective schools utilize meeting time to build capacity and skill as opposed to a laundry list of just, you know, sort of organizational pieces. And that's been a hallmark, and, and Ms. Clowder is responsible for organizing and then collaborating with other members of our district leadership team around what the, the, we're going to do during the, the monthly meetings we have and the day-long summer workshop we have, and then interspersing that with other targeted pieces like the one you just do, as Hurd. But I think that, you know, whether it's the application of, we're looking at closing achievement gaps, we want, we, we have some research we did, you know, the opportunity gap that was referred to in the memo you received that we discussed. And how do we take that and turn it into action of like actually looking and seeing how, how our kids are doing, how we can support our teachers and, and their practice to try to do the, the sort of research-based approaches that are going to work, whether that's literacy at the K to six level, whether that's looking at humanities. And last year was math. I think next year, math and science at the high school will go through the same kind of process. So it's, it's a, it's not just talking at the leadership level at a meeting, and then it's applying it to actually what's happening in classrooms in our schools. That's happening right now in terms of our personnel searches, the work we've done around trying to look at, how can we look at strategies for diversifying our workforce? The things that we learned about are now being put into practice. We'll see what the results are. It's a challenging place to move the metrics, but, you know, we're, we're hopeful that that will help us and be, you know, avoid unintentional bias around the hiring process, which is a lot of, you know, work that's happening in a lot of organizations around that. But the application of learning for leaders as well, and I think that that's important, that leaders are demonstrating that we are doing our own professional development to try to advance things just as we expect our educators and support staff to do that as well. So I appreciate the work and thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. The next item on our agenda is under Finance and Operations regarding facilities rental fees. So be discussion and vote. There's a report enclosed from Mr. Girardi, highlights the costs associated with Shrewsbury Public Schools facility rentals and makes a recommendation that fees be increased in light of inflation and evolving space and utility needs. In addition to Mr. Girardi, we have Ms. April Yu with us today, Assistant Finance and Operations Manager, and Brian LaRue, who's our Director of Information Technology. Welcome.
Thank you. When we come to you as a team, this year, we embarked on a project. I still have this gentleman beside me who's, who's pretty, pretty good at projects, running projects. But we, we're working on a project with the town to automate our facility rental process. It's a pretty elaborate system where to rent a space, there's many different departments who are involved in making sure that that rental goes, goes well, from custodial needs to making sure that the driveways are plowed and the grass is cut for those groups coming in to use our different facilities. And then in recent years, we've had Google Forms and other forums to be able to help us identify what those needs are. And using an open gov source, which is an online platform, it allows us to streamline and to automate the process to make it more user-friendly for the customer. And it allows us to better understand what the needs are and to plan for them. And Mr. LaRue will speak to that in, in just a few moments. But as we were doing that, we, we were able to take a look at the entire facility rental fee program that we offer and realized it's time for some updating. So there are four facility rental group classifications that we have as part of our...
Mr. Jordan, it's not broadcasting, so I don't know if we can bring it up on the...
I appreciate that.
Screens, yeah. Mr. LaRue may assist if necessary.
There we go.
Thanks.
Thank you. So our school committee policy for facility rentals has four groups that we use. Group A is our school groups and our civil, our civic groups. These are based in Shrewsbury but not necessarily established as nonprofit organizations. These are our internal activities, school sports teams, clubs, PTO events, all town departments and recreation. And these events are scheduled through the schools using a shared calendar. We, we don't track that usage in a way that we track usage from some of the other groups. Mr. LaRue will speak to open gov giving us the capacity to be able to do some of that tracking as we move to an online platform, which will be really helpful for us. Our second group is our Group B, our nonprofit groups. These are our youth sports organizations, groups classified under Section 501(c)(3) of the IRS tax code, club teams. This is where we get the majority of our facility use rental. Ms. Yu was able to identify that in this, this year, we have nine hundred and thirty-eight hours of rented space from, from this group. That's our, our most significant group. Group C is our for-profit groups and nonprofit groups that have fewer than fifty percent of participants residing in Shrewsbury. And here, you know, these are folks that are not closely associated with Shrewsbury. That does impact the fee structure that we have in place for them, and we have eighty-two hours of rented space for this group. And finally, Group D is a for-profit camp. These are, you know, the for-profit groups from Group C if they're going to run a camp. And they have rental contracts that are issued through central office. Fees are based on fifteen percent of the gross revenue as part of the, as, as part of the school committee policy. We do have information in there as to what the cost... We do have information in there as to what the cost, what the fees are for those groups if they're renting, say athletic fields or whatever else it might be, that might be separate from a contract that they would use. There to me. So our facility rental revolving account history, I'm going back to 2017, which is a few years prior to, um, uh, prior to the pandemic. Um, and this is looking at some revenues and expenses that we've had in this category. And, and what this shows is, you know, dating back to FY18, um, you know, it's a self-funding program. It's, you know, we bring in revenue, we, we expense, um, you know, costs out and it's just under a break-even difference between the beginning balance for that, for that year and, and balance for that year. Dating back to FY17, you know, there was, you know, a healthy difference, a healthy growth in that, um, in that fund. And then in subsequent years, we're looking at anywhere from a 12 to 20 to 40, you know, the, the COVID years, FY20 and FY21, we basically shut down facility rental use, uh, and then it picked up again in '22 and in '23. FY23, where we were, if you look at the bottom line difference, we were able to start to gain back a positive variance between the beginning and end of year, uh, different, um, fund balance. But it's a, it's a structure with the fees where we're, we're not increasing, uh, we're not making growth in our end-of-year balance over time. Uh, we're slowly decreasing over time and, you know, this is certainly something that had us take a look at, you know, are there ways to restructure the, the fee structure, the fee structure for this, uh, program, um, to, to bring a positive variance? To date, FY24, our balance is $69,089, uh, where we started with $80,915. Again, this is a moving number at this time of year. Um, it's tough to look at, you know, where we are. There's lots of things and encumbrance, um, and POs that are not being reflected in this just yet. So, um, we'll keep an eye on this, uh, we'll keep an eye on this number. All right. So having said that, we are making a recommendation to increase, uh, facility rental fees. Few bullet points here as to why we're doing that. Uh, we want to reflect the current market rates for facility rental use. Um, the last rental space fee adjustment was made in 2013, um, with the addition of the turf field rental in 2017. Uh, and an important piece to me is to sustain the no-charge rate for Group A and we'll, we'll get to the charge rates in a few moments. But our Group A, which is our school groups, our PTOs, um, we don't charge a, a fee for custodians, for IT staff, for site supervisors when they're needed and we want to maintain that. We want to be able to make sure we're covering the inflationary costs associated with the hourly rates for custodians, IT staff, site supervisors. An example is a custodian, right now we're charging $35 an hour for an additional custodian. Their going rate is closer to $55 per hour. We want to, um, make an adjustment there to reflect their, their hourly rate. But we use our, our facility rental fees to insist in offsetting the wear and tear of our school facilities if folks are using them. So this supports the cost of maintenance and repairs outside of the public buildings division budget. So some examples of that is, you know, we've been able to, um, we'll, we've been able to add, uh, some infrastructure around our PA system. Uh, we've been able to, um, install some cameras. So we've been able to use some funds from this, uh, from this account to be able to do some upgrades and maintenance and, and, um, bring our, our building to where we want it to be as a result of some of the fees that we're taking from our facility rentals. It also assists in offsetting some salaries to staff who manage facility rental responsibilities, um, different supervisors who oversee the program as part of their, uh, daily responsibilities. It does, there's a small offset there for some folks in their salaries. And we want to reflect the evolving demand of rental space and resources. Um, we don't charge for Wi-Fi needs. Uh, we don't have a tennis court rental currently. Um, things are evolving where these are resources that are in demand by the public and we want to offer them, but we also want to make sure that, uh, what we're charging is a fair fee and, and we're able to sustain the program long-term. So there are two categories when we speak about different fees for facility rentals. There's the actual space itself, um, classrooms, uh, conference rooms, gymnasiums, fields. And then there's fees that cover the cost of services and utilities. Uh, these are the custodians, our technology, lights for turf field, evening use, um, our facilities monitor. Uh, we do have, you know, we do have monitors when someone's renting the turf field and we're lighting it, that where they're supervising the, the property to make sure that the, uh, it's being used appropriately. So here's our current fee structure. Um, there's a lot of information here, but if we look at the top grid, uh, Group A is our school groups, our PTOs, our town departments. You can see in, in each of the, each of the two grids, we don't charge for room rentals, turf field, we don't charge for custodians, um, and such. Group B are the nonprofits in Section 501(c)(3)'s. These are youth sports, uh, club sports. Uh, we have a current, uh, cost for Group B of, um, $80 an hour for the room rentals in turf field. We don't charge a tennis court fee currently. And then we don't charge for custodians, AV support. We do have the light fee and the monitor fee for folks using the turf field there. Group C, we do have a, a larger fee for this group, uh, as you can see, for each of the different, uh, spaces and for the service fees. And then Group D, um, you know, there's the, the Group D fee there as well. Our recommendation, um, as we've been doing some work looking at, uh, the cost of different folks, um, around what other communities are charging for similar facilities, which Ms. Yu will speak to in just a few moments. Um, we want to maintain the no-charge for Group A. Uh, Group B, we want to have a increase, um, in both room rentals and, uh, the service fees to reflect either the hourly rate of the purse, of the custodian or, um, IT support that would be there, uh, and then the Wi-Fi access is a new fee that Mr. LaRue will speak to. Group C, again, another slight increase there. And not all of these increases are based on a percentage. We looked at each space independently. Um, we looked at what other communities were, were, uh, charging for use of those facilities and we made a, a, a pretty, uh, you know, we wanted to make sure that it's, it's within market and we want to make sure that the, uh, charge for that space is reflective of, of the services that we're providing, uh, the customer. And from here, I'll turn it over to Ms. Yu.
Uh, good evening, everyone. We did a pretty extensive research, like looking at the neighboring towns, like pretty much like 20 or 30 really miles radius, like what are those districts charging? So we had a very long Google sheet, many columns and rows and capturing all the cost. So we're not going to show you everything of like over 30 towns and cities, what they are charging. But pretty much those, we are familiar with the towns, like we all know the names of, like Worcester, Marlboro, like all the towns we are, you know, pretty close to like Auburn. So if you, I know it's very small, but, um, I hope you can see your PowerPoint. So if you look at those auditoriums, gymnasiums, like those popular places people are using, um, some districts, they are using per-day cost, some districts are using per-hour cost. So we are trying to compare, do the, you know, do the comparison, use our best knowledge and effort, um, to, to decide like based on our current cost and what could be appropriate and like reasonable cost and acceptable and competitive price, uh, to charge like in the future. So if you can see clearly, like Auburn, uh, the auditorium cost is $125 to $400 per hour. Um, so we can see that our proposed cost is 120 to 275, a little bit increased, uh, from what we are currently charging for those, uh, facilities. So, um, and also Worcester, if you can see that, their cost is like their fees are a lot higher than what we are charging. So I know those towns, they are very close to us, like Worcester is literally next city. So I feel like we are offering a very, very competitive, uh, price for that. And then for the turf field, we are very, very fortunate, we have like turf field, almost like new, right, is 2017. Um, so those turf fields, definitely we need maintenance, a lot of maintenance. Um, so we were looking at those neighboring towns and cities, some of them, like Marlboro or Natick, it's not applicable because I, when I was researching it, they don't have any information on the website when I call. They probably don't either, not renting it if, even if they have it. So that's why the information is not there. But let's look at the ones already have, like information available, like Oxford, like, uh, Neshoba, Millbury, all those. So if you look at Millbury, who is also like next town to us, so their cost is, price is $200 per hour. So if we increase to like even for for-profit, 180, it's still a pretty competitive price. And also for the lighting fee and also monitor fee, we want to make sure it's, uh, we are paying the correct wage for the monitor. And you can also see like for Worcester, they are charging 245 to 36, 395 per hour. So this is just a comparison we're using so we can come up with pretty like reasonable like pri, price competitive. So the custodian cost, um, we realized that, um, the first custodian actually is embedded in the $80 per hour cost, uh, we are charging. So we are looking at the market. So if you look at, um, Webster is 50 to 60 and Worcester is 55, Fremont is charging $75 per hour and Clinton is using $400 flat fee. So I know every district, they operate differently. So based on what we have researched, we feel like $55 is a reasonable fee and also we talked to the town and that's, uh, because most of the time is overtime for the custodians. It's 1.5, it's not their regular hourly rate, so 55 is a reasonable rate for now. So obviously with cost of living adjustment, it could be increased in the future to match that. So this is what we have, you know, based on the research, what we have come up with. Thank you.
So since this was last reviewed, uh, times have changed, obviously, and we've been getting, uh, an increasing number of requests for Wi-Fi, uh, access for these events. So, uh, with our security set up, there's, there's some account work to set up, uh, access for an event during the day. Uh, so we set that up, um, and then we provide them the information that they'll need to access the, the Wi-Fi off-hours. So that, that, for that purpose, we'll have a, we're proposing a, an hourly, uh, Wi-Fi access rate of $10 an hour. Separately from that, there have been a few, uh, instances where event organizers have ex, have expressed that Wi-Fi is critical to their event. Um, and we want to provide the option that we could, that they could request that we have onsite, uh, support for the Wi-Fi. You know, so maybe that can help people with issues that they have or contact, um, the network staff if there's an issue, a wide, more widespread issue. Um, so we're proposing a $75 per hour rate for that. That would cover, uh, again, as you mentioned, uh, the time and a half rate for, uh, the NC A/B scale that they, the technicians could be on, uh, potentially for that support. And, uh, as Mr. Girardi mentioned, we're looking at also kind of revamping the process. Um, initially, when you might think of this process, it might appear to be a scheduling problem and kind of fitting things in, uh, but we've found that it's a, primarily a communication problem and also a workflow problem. And that's something that, uh, the town has had some experience with solving with their open gov system. Uh, they're really starting to, um, use that more and more under the leadership of, uh, Ms. Julie Tierney to, uh, support permitting and kind of provide a one-stop shop for residents for accomplishing various tasks in town relating to the town government. So we're looking to use that, uh, tool as well, uh, to support this process. So that would basically allow us to collect all the information we need from an event organizer upfront and depending on what they enter for what they need, whether it's a, you know, say the, the field house at the high school is needed. Well, we can also, we can add a routing step to go to the athletic director, uh, Mr. Costa, so he can double-check to make sure that, uh, there's not a conflict there. Uh, if somebody requests, uh, you know, a microphone setup, we can ask them for more information there. We can route it to our IT staff, the support staff, so they can make sure that they're A, available for the event and B, that they understand what the needs are, uh, for that event as well. Um, and that can also route events to, um, to, uh, to the rest of the IT staff for Wi-Fi support and then other parts of, uh, town government. So that will allow us to kind of close the loop, communication loop, uh, which has been one of the problems that we've had. It'll allow those people to have a direct line of communication to the organizers so they're not having to go through Ms. Yu for, uh, to get additional information and that kind of thing. And it'll also allow for online payment of, uh, of fees and that kind of thing.
Okay. So that wraps up our presentation here. Uh, you know, I think having a, the ability for our community and, um, you know, local groups to access our school facilities, it's a really nice benefit that we're able to offer. Um, it's something, as Mr. LaRue was just saying, it's, it, it works really well when, you know, all the pieces are well-oiled and together and, um, that custodian is there to open the building, that, um, you know, that the facility is used as, as needed, they have a, all the different things they need to operate, uh, their, their event. And, um, as, as we're doing this work and, uh, maintaining this opportunity, it's really a nice opportunity with a, a fee structure that allows us to support that in a way that's, uh, that's sustainable for, for our budgets. It allows us to, you know, make sure that our folks are getting paid. It makes, allows us to, um, make sure that the facilities are being maintained and, and we're able to, the upkeep for them, um, is there and, uh, that's, I think, part of the rationale be, behind, um, our, uh, request tonight to, to update the fees. So with that, we'll take questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Colleagues, questions or comments? Ms. Severn?
Yeah, a, a couple of things. Have you done any calculation about if we change the fees as you proposed, what, and, and rental rates were similar, um, which obviously we never know. If you raise the rates, you'll probably have less rentals, but, um, of what that difference would be into the bottom line to make count? You said that today it's $69,000, give or take. What would we expect?
Sure. So if we look at the number of rentals, if I go, come back up here, um, so our different groups, you know, if we're looking at 938 hours of rented space from Group B, um, if we're doing a slight, that's pretty much where the majority of, of our rentals are from. Ms. Yu, you have... I think the, I'm trying to remember what the bottom line cost was from that group. It's somewhere...
It was $80 per hour, increased to $100 per hour, but the $80 didn't, uh, already included the first custodian. So we are actually adding the custodian cost to that.
So they pay $20 more, but they don't pay a custodian? Or is the other way around?
They have to be charged a...
In addition?
Custodian fee, yes.
Right, okay. Um, I guess, I guess this isn't, uh, more for my colleagues, I don't really understand this Group A, B, C, and D. It's our policy. I was looking at our policy and I'm like, wha? Well, I don't, the difference between C and D in particular, it seems as though you've kind of are zeroing out a lot of the fee differentials between C and D or they're pretty similar. And how we think that for-profit groups and nonprofit groups are fewer than 50% is different than for-profit camps. I'm a little struggling that if for-profit, one of the, the policies suggests like, or some documentation, I was looking at like dance groups, I'm like, well, for-profit dance group is somehow different than a for-profit soccer camp? I don't, I don't really get what we're trying to get at there, which is maybe, some of my questions are like, why? By and large, I gotta back up. I actually think we're, this is a place where we could potentially think more about this and, and I'm, sorry, I'm a little something stuck in my throat. Knowing that most of our groups are Group B, most of our rentals are Group B... Knowing that most of our groups are group B, most of our rentals are group B, and I think the rationale here is that we want, we sort of like group B, we want to be more supportive of and less onerous because we see lots of value either for our kids or our community members and our public spaces, that makes sense. But the eighty-two hours of group C, do we have no group D in the last year? Is it, I don't see anything on this slide.
Not last year because it those are camps, so we haven't opened up for the camps
Okay.
For the long-term rental.
I think after COVID, a lot of the camps
Just
Typically, we would have like week-long basketball campuses at Shrewsbury High School in the summertime that uh a community member ran for many years. Uh, there could be, and I think the the idea behind camps uh being on the fifteen percent of gross revenue. Um, if you're, the 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 cost of sort of a rental of a gym for four consecutive days all day long would probably cross prohibitive, cost prohibitive for someone to offer and actually offer at a rate that that students would actually participate. So it's a little bit of a uh kind of a volume discount that if you're taking space for the whole week and it provides a good experience for local students, then uh it it's a little bit of a different price modeling there. But those are, those are typically few and far between. Uh, even prior to COVID, you might have a handful each year that might be utilized in that. Mr. Lopamardo, for many years, ran a a drama camp. Uh, if you had to rent the auditorium at the actual auditorium rate for two straight weeks, it would it would be cost prohibitive to actually what it would cost. So it's a little bit of a uh uh kind of economy of scale piece with the with the for-profit camps. Um, and uh, you know, otherwise, it really comes down to, are they more located locally? Or is it, is it a group that's not, you know, maybe regional, but isn't particularly based in Shrewsbury? And so you're 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 giving a price break to uh the those organizations like Shrewsbury Little League or Shrewsbury Youth Basketball, whatever it might be, who's using our facilities and uh is primarily a Shrewsbury-based group, that would be the folks that would be in in group B. But it's been a longstanding piece, it's been, it's been the policy as long as I've been in in, I think, in Shrewsbury pretty much in terms of this uh this approach. And uh, you know, if it's something that the school committee wanted us to look at more deeply, you know, over time, that's certainly something we could do. Um, I I think as I understand it, um, some of the costs as custodian compensation has risen over time. Uh, you know, we just need to make, we don't want to be losing money on the deal uh when when we're offering the the opportunity for people to rent the space and then some of the changes with wifi and and some of the other pieces that weren't really considered in in the past in terms of an adjustment at this point in time.
Yeah, and and should my comments in any way be unclear? I I think we're being too generous. I guess this is a space where like we have a, we have valuable property, it costs us lots of money, we're talking about staff time, and so I'm, if anything, like, you know, are we raising it enough? And this is the trade-off, right? But like we want programs to happen locally in our communities, I I I get that. So I'm just trying to figure out, have we quite tight traded it to the right level? Or, you know, usually when we look at one of these, one of these uh lists of fees and we're down and we're going up a little bit, I'm like, oh, I'm worried about kids paying them. Now I'm like, wait a minute, that's, we're not charging very much for our auditoriums, we're not charging very much, like I I actually feel it's a little low. Um, but that's where I'm trying to understand sort of like the who is the user? And like, why is it that we don't have a room rental or gym auditorium rentals for group D? Do we just decide that group D can't rent at the gym an auditorium? And 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 if, but it says in there that if they, if that cost does get too prohibitive, to your point, Dr. Sawyer, you know, we could potentially do an hourly rate, if not fifteen percent, could do an hourly rate. I assume then we, it says they wouldn't have custodians, but then they would have custodians?
Right, so the um, we don't do room, like the room rentals, meaning say a classroom or um conference space, that's not app, really not applicable to a group D who's running, say, a camp. Um, so uh those two categories there and and the gym and auditorium, that's more where I think the the fifteen percent of the of the contract would be for for that group coming in, that would be set with uh, you know, with the school department.
But we would charge the turf on an hourly rate?
So that's, that's a rate there, it most likely would be within the contract. Uh, but um, you know, if it's a camp that's coming, say, once a week over the course of a summer, you know, there's different variations of what that might look like, if it makes more sense to charge the hourly uh fee for that camp, then that could be considered.
Right, and and certainly, um, Ms. Leroux very supportive of the process improvements that make it a little easier for people to access these and learn about them and make it a little simpler. That that all seems great, I'm just trying to understand, like, we don't, we we clearly don't look at this very often, and now that we are, like, are we getting it right? Is kind of just what I'm trying to uh get at and, um, you know, we're a municipal government, we're not, we're not here to make a profit. But these things actually cost us money, and I'm like, yeah, to one degree, you know, the hourly rate for the custodian, while that's great, all of our staff have their own overhead, right? Like, it's not just time and a half, right? Like, so, so I'm just trying to think about, you know, I want to be, I want to make sure there isn't a a little bit higher driver that we could put on on some of these, because you all spend a lot of time on this stuff. Uh, and that's not really built, built in there either, so, I I defer to my colleagues.
Additional questions, Ms. Truett?
Um, this might tie into something you were saying before. So for group B, which is our biggest group of users, um, I guess for all of them, this would apply. But with these changes that could happen, are, is there a plan to let them know ahead of them booking this? Because some of them, like, I'm thinking, because it's group B and those are a lot of Shrewsbury-related, because obviously, well, a lot of people using our facilities. Um, you know, are we gonna wait until Shrewsbury Youth Soccer wants to do something that's like, well, you paid, I'm just making this up, two hundred last year, but now it's five hundred, and then they're like, ooh, well, like, we we can't afford that, you know, whatever that case is. Um, because it just looks like group B, although C and D have higher, now they have fees that they didn't have before, group B has more charges that could apply to them now? Um, because I don't want to obviously lose people using the schools. Um, but are we gonna communicate that out to them prior to them, like, filling out the form and saying?
Right, I think this is a good time to be having this conversation here. Um, our next steps coming out of here would be to go back to our working group with uh the town departments. Uh, one of those town departments is the Recreation Department, uh working with Laura Wosser there. Um, and coming up with that communication, once we have our fee structure in place, to be able to begin communicating out. Uh, this would go into effect, uh, our goal is July one, um, with some communication ahead of time and our bookings to really start to roll in come fall. Uh, so getting those early communications out for those fall sports, um, and making sure that they are aware of that and then moving forward with that. We do have some people that are booking into next year already. Um, we are going to honor the contract that we have with them currently, and then as we're ready to move forward with other folks, we will do that in due time.
Ms. Truett?
I think I'm thinking more or more on the lines that Lindsay has, just making sure that we're covering our costs. I think any, the fees have to cover the the full costs of the rental, any wifi, lights, all of those things. So I I also thought maybe the C and the D group were a little low, but then we have to worry about cost saturation. But then when I look through what Ms. Yu did, all of those, I think we are competitive, but we're low. Um, because, you know, some of the auditoriums I can think of that I've been in Worcester when I went to school, that people are still renting today are not like our auditorium. So like, they're get, they're paying more for probably a different level of facility. So I, to me, I think C and D maybe could be higher, because I would want to make sure everything is covered for anyone who's renting. That's
Okay.
Yeah.
Additional comments? Yeah, I I agree with the comments that have been made about looking at this policy a little closer. I think it's worth worthwhile exercise to kind of understand it better and then also evaluate the groupings, uh, just to, you know, ma- maybe you just understand how we might be able to restructure it, maybe, I don't know. And it's been a little while since we reviewed it. And also take advantage of our our location. I know after sitting on the the turf uh subcommittee years ago, thinking about how we're so centrally located, right off of two ninety, taking advantage of that. You know, I know there's been some drop-off in terms of, you know, programs and like events and things like that since post-COVID. So it's maybe taken a little bit uh to ramp on those, on the level of interest for the turf. But I I do think it's definitely worth looking at, because, you know, definitely uh could be something we could look at to generate additional revenue. But to stay competitive too, obviously, we want to make sure that we're competitive if nothing else, so. Um, Dr. Sawyer, any additional comments?
Well, I, I mean, I appreciate the feedback from the committee and and uh, you know, we'll defer to the committee if you wish to move forward or if you want to table this and and come back with a different number. I think that in terms of the the market, uh, I think we're, where we typically place ourselves in the market, not at the top, uh, but not at the bottom. And uh some places it's competitive, the the it is structured so that uh the uh the school department's not losing money and the town's not losing money, we're not, we're not losing money by paying, uh, I mean, we're getting to the point where we were or would be if we don't raise the rates because of custodian uh compensation's gone up over time, and these haven't changed for ten years, and obviously with the huge interruption with COVID. Uh, I think that uh, you know, over time, typically, you see that we we grew a balance that we would draw off each year. And it really is a very uh helpful uh place i- in terms of having some funds to do things that come up that, you know, can't earn in the public buildings budget necessarily, but hey, we really would like to, you know, improve this particular element of the gymnasium or, you know, the, geez, that scoreboard flamed out and we weren't really expecting that this year. Uh, that's not gonna be in the public buildings budget, but we can, it's not, it's not really necessarily in the athletics budget this year, but we could use the public buildings, uh, the rental fee budget to purchase a new scoreboard that we might need to do pretty quickly. Um, so those are just some examples of the kinds of things that we use it for. I I think that the, you know, as my recollection, um, in terms of kind of the group B piece being a little more generous than than more out-of-town folks, um, I do recall the last time this was changed, back in two thousand thirteen, we had some criticism from, uh, I believe it was the Shrewsbury Youth Soccer League at the time, that they were gonna have to pass on some significant cost increases to their families, um, and that they were not, uh, you know, they were concerned about. Um, I think that the, um, you know, the the feedback at the time was that, you know, there, these are Shrewsbury families paying taxes for the school buildings themselves already. Um, and so this is sort of an additional charge on top of that. Obviously, the primary use of the buildings is for the school department's functions, and that's, you know, we always, you know, a rental never trumps what we need to use it for in terms of our own uh uh activities and and events and those kinds of things. But where we have ability, we want these to be community uh spaces as well, um, and want them to be utilized. And and I think that, um, you know, we certainly don't have enough of a sophisticated approach, given where we're at and and capacity we have, to do a super detailed analysis of, you know, trying to predict, you know, well, where are we gonna get some more local sports rental if we keep it at this rate? But if we price ourselves, are we gonna price ourselves on the market if we rate it to this much? Um, I think we try to be good partners with the local, you know, oftentimes it's athletic groups, scouts, um, you know, for their banquets, those kinds of things to make sure. Uh, but over time, we were able to to make sure there was a healthy balance there that we could utilize, uh, because we weren't losing money on it. And I think, you know, some of the years where we've been taking more out, some of those were very difficult budget years, and then we weren't renting it as much. And clearly, it's not back to the level yet uh where it was prior. Um, but, uh, you know, I am comfortable with the work that's been done, you know, i- if we wanted to move forward, if you were, if you saw fit to move forward this evening um, to to see how the new prices are working over the course of next year and and, you know, a year from now in the spring, say, here's what the rentals look like at the new rates, we were able to cover our costs, we were able to to gain some, uh, you know, we don't like to do a pro- profit here, we're not a poor profit, but uh, you know, positive variance hopefully in the account um, and see where we're at and and where we are and where the market remains for us. Uh, if you'd like us to look more carefully at the numbers, uh, we can, we can do that. Uh, you know, we would like to put something in place to start the next school year, um, and uh, you know, we want to have some time to communicate that. I I think it'd be better to do it for the start of a school year than than midway, uh, because we do tend to start get bookings. Um, you know, a lot of these leagues and and groups are planful in terms of trying to book out spaces in advance so that they can make sure that they have spaces for their games and practices and then those kinds of things as well. So it's uh, you know, it's not a perfect process by any means, but uh I think at this point, there's a sense we'd like to be able to make an adjustment. We haven't made in a long time, um, and uh, you know, but I'll I'll certainly defer to you to see if that's something you want to do this evening or if you want to wait and uh look for some additional information first.
Further comments, Ms. Severn?
I'd be comfortable moving ahead with this as Dr. Sawyer just outlined. I think taking a look at this a year from now makes sense. I think I'd like to see, since we haven't adjusted it in ten years, why don't we go ahead with the fees adjusted as um outlined? And then we can take another look at this in a year and see how it's impacted our rentals, how the community has responded to the increases and so forth. And then if, at that time, um, if we feel like we're still out out of market, we think that, um, you know, our rentals have stayed the same, maybe there's room there to increase them a little bit more. But um, I think, given that it hasn't been adjusted in so long, I'm I'm comfortable going ahead with this adjustment at this time.
Any additional, Ms. Severn?
I just, I'm, I'm sorry, colleagues, I'm just a little, um, I'm having a hard time understanding what this does to the bottom line. And so the nine hundred and twenty-eight hours plus the twenty, plus the fifty-five, and trying to do a little quick math. I'd just love, if even just next week, a little bit of understanding of if we did this, maybe taking this year's rentals and helping just a quick and you have obviously a whole category of new fees, ignore those, right? Because you can't compare, we don't know what, how many people would have wanted wifi access or something. But like, our straight rental costs, what does that look like? And maybe a little bit of a sense of, since this, since we are trying to grow it back, if we looked back a couple of years pre-COVID and we use those numbers, right? Like, we, we're not where we want to be, I understand that, um, but we're, if we got back to where we want to be, I I just can't kind of tell. Um, and there are a couple of them as we, as we've asked some questions here that are, you know, we're raising for group B of the auditorium from eighty dollars to a hundred and twenty, which is a lot, um, for the gym, uh gym for group B. But for group C, it's only going up five dollars from two sixty to two seventy-five. And so when we think about if C is where we think we could
Raise.
Yeah, I just, I'm like, maybe that should be higher. And so, um, I didn't, I'm not looking for a deep economic analysis, Dr. Sawyer, but a little bit of like, is there, is there some room for a little bit of, a little bit of growth? And since we have the love benefit of meeting next week, hopefully we can get something done quickly. Uh, but I don't know what our capacity, you know, capacities are, but I I'm, I would like to see us build up that account again such that when there is, uh, something that breaks and we we have a little bit more to, more to, more to play with and more to work with, because these things are very expensive. I'm just, I'm a little wary, um, Ms. Boucher, that we might, if we did something tonight, because of the way things get busy, sit with those fees for five years and forget to come back to it and, you know, and now we we have them. So, um, a little bit more rigor there and make sure each of those buckets make sense is where where I'm at. But if the rest of the committee wants to vote, certainly not gonna spoil that up.
I think for me, it's that that account to having that positive variance, and it was kind of alarming to see what's happened over time. And I know part of that was COVID, but making sure that that was funds that we could use for other things to be done that maybe Public Works or Athletics Department couldn't do. Um, so I think waiting a week isn't really gonna change anything and maybe having just a little more information. And I agree, I think, to me, it's that C category that I think we could raise higher and still be in the market and not have a cost, you know, people are gonna look at it and understand, because the cost of doing business is increasing, we know that, inflation's increasing. So I want to make sure that we're doing what we need to do, or I think protecting group B is what we want to protect. But that group C, to me, is maybe where we could make some movement. That isn't going to price us out of the market, but also be um actually more competitive on some level with our surrounding communities.
Ms. Truett?
Um, I I would agree, if we could just wait a week and if at all possible, look at last year or maybe last year and the year before COVID, just to see if we charged these rates that we're proposing, what that does to, we know what it did that year at those, at the current rates, what that would do, if that was possible, to to just look and see who booked it that year. And with what they asked for, what that would amount to in the proposed fees. I think if that could be done in a, in the week, I would, I'd be comfortable.
Yeah, I I'm gonna say that the week's not reasonable because that the packet goes out Friday, and there's not time between now and Friday to do that work. But the for June, the first June meeting, I think we can have something for you.
Okay, yeah.
Some, I mean, I I wouldn't mind everything cost, some examples, I don't think we have to do all, could you pull some examples? I don't want to make it harder for you, because we know there's a lot of other things going on right now, we're preparing for town meeting. I mean, if if you feel comfortable waiting for June first? And I, it's
Is that the, you know, what the school committee is looking to do, we'll certainly
For me, it's the first time tonight that we're seeing that we had a negative in recent years, I didn't know that, it wasn't in our materials. And so I think we gotta just take a moment to make sure that these are the right numbers. So if it's June first, that that, uh, you know, I recognize that people want to know what the rates are and you potentially are gonna execute a couple of contracts, it might be a little lower than it would have been if, you know, we we made this decision tonight. But I think that um, a little bit of due diligence here makes some, makes some sense. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't want you to, I don't want us to have a negative balance again, uh, and and be wary that we can't fix the scoreboard when
I want to be clear, though, it's that a negative balance isn't necessarily because we didn't make enough money on the rentals, it's what we chose to spend out of the category. So we had two hundred thousand dollars in the category and we decided to make a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of repairs that year because we had the money available. That's independent of what we actually took in versus what our costs were. I mean, generally, the idea is to cover your costs and actually make more on top of that, so you can grow a balance that then you can draw on
When needed.
To either, you know, offset some personnel costs as well as, as well as that. So there's a couple of different things there, which I think makes sense to to wait, and I think we can provide, you know, some analysis around that would look like. I think you've given us some ideas of what you're looking for. Um, I I think, you know, personally, I'm perfectly fine, um, the June fifth meeting is the first meeting of perfectly fine. The June fifth meeting is the first meeting of the, after the meeting next week, because there's town meeting in between. And, you know, I think that we could bring something back that would give you some answers to the questions you've asked this evening, and see if, and we may make some recommendations based on that, or a couple of options for you, in terms of some of the rates that you'd be able to make a determination on. And that would still give us a month before July one, and certainly a few months before the busy fall season. Some people book in advance, and depending on what it is, we can signal to them that, you know, this is the, the price may change. We can certainly let them know that as well. But, you know, certainly people have already booked with us, we'll honor those, with, with the numbers that were in place when they, when they made those reservations. So, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yep.
Table a discussion to June.
Yep.
Okay.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is, also under Finance and Operations, it's a vote on the nurse, nurse substitute rate. There's an enclosed memo from Noel Freeman, Director of School Nursing. The rate for school nurse substitutes is now below market, and making it difficult to recruit qualified individuals to fill this need. So here presents is, I think, Mr. Girardi, and?
I'm, I'm, I'm presenting this one, that's fine. Given that it was National School Nurse Day, I didn't think it appropriate to ask Ms. Freeman to be out here late in the evening for something that I, I think is fairly straightforward, and would ask the school committee support for. To summarize Ms. Freeman's memo, we are, our current rate is thirty dollars an hour for day-to-day substitute for nurses. You know, the nursing market obviously is different than the, the day-to-day teacher substitute market. It's always been a little bit different and based on an hourly rate. The market has shifted over time. Worcester's paying forty-six dollars an hour, Westboro thirty-five, Northboro, Southboro thirty-five. They'll pay forty dollars an hour if it's a retired school nurse. And so to become competitive essentially with those neighbors, Ms. Freeman's recommending that we shift the, to, and, and they may be raising theirs next, for next year, we don't know that information yet, but to thirty-seven point, thirty-seven and a half dollars an hour, thirty-seven fifty an hour from the current thirty. And this can be absorbed in the budget, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is that it's hard to get school nurses, so we haven't utilized all the funds. But also, you may recall that we added that additional nursing position, a couple, well, it's in place this year, I think it was in place last year as well. But as a float nurse, to be able to take on a variety of tasks, and also to be able to cover, because it is difficult to get nurse substitutes. And that's, that's reduced our need for substitutes, and so there's room in the budget. We budget, next year's budget has about twenty-eight thousand dollars devoted to nursing subs. This year, you know, we expect the impact would be about a sixty-seven hundred dollar increase. And this year, just to find in the memo here, we're expecting to utilize about fifteen thousand dollars this year. So even if we increase the rate, if it's the same usage this year, we'll be comfortably under budget, even if the usage increases a bit, we'll still be there. And to me, this is a, a good opportunity, and I trust Ms. Freeman's judgment around this, putting us in a more competitive place, in order to try to procure nurse substitutes when we need them, for the variety of reasons that are, that are noted in your memo. But happy to answer any questions, and, but think this would be a wise decision to make at this point.
Great. Thank you very much. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Okay, great. Well, we need to vote, and I will need a motion that the school committee vote to increase the rate of pay for substitute nurses as presented effective May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. All right. Next item on the agenda is under New Business. It's an Aspet Valley Collaborative Update. The state law governing educational collaboratives requires four updates each year to member districts, member school districts. The Aspet Valley Collaborative Board of Directors approved tuition rates and fees for FY twenty-five, and the rates are enclosed. Dr. Sawyer is here to provide us with an update.
Sure. And this is brief. Again, this is a, a state requirement that we provide updates. It doesn't require lengthy reports or anything of the like. This update, at this point, just wanted to, in your packet, you have a rate sheet of what the tuitions that'll be charged next year by the collaborative for the various programs that they offer, some of which are, some of our students do take advantage of, and we get the member rate, which certainly helps us in terms of compared to what we might pay in other, other locations. The rates are going up about four to five percent, pretty typical of what we're seeing in various inflation factors. And these are rates that are set by the Aspet Board, of which I'm a voting member representing Shrewsbury, and based on the presentation that was made in the financials, I was very comfortable with the recommendation being made. So it's just a little bit of context around the various programs they offer, what they cost on a per-student basis, and really just an informational update at this point in time.
Great. Colleagues, questions, comments? All right, great. Thank you for the report. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Minutes from the school committee meeting held on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. I was provided under separate cover. Colleagues, any revisions or edits to recommend? There being none, the minutes will be accepted as written. We do need to go into executive session tonight, so we will request a motion to adjourn into executive session for A, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Sections Twenty-One, A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Sections Twenty-Two, F, and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and chair. So declares, purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Par-Professional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association, and C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators. Purpose two, where deliberation in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and return to open session only for the purposes of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote is required. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Repafor?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you, and good night.